Mayor, Council, this is item number 71. It is an annual item that has come before council. We did submit a memo to this regard on September 21st, talking about the adjustment to AE's power supply adjustment rates and other pass-through charges for fiscal year 2023. And then we do have a presentation that was distributed early this morning that we will have our CFO, Mark Dombrowski, walk through. Our general manager, Jackie Sargent, is available but remotely. And so Jackie is with us for additional questions and context. I don't know, General Manager, if you wanted to say anything before I turn it over to Mark, but otherwise I will turn it directly to Mark Dombrowski.
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to share information. This is important. Mark does have a presentation that he will walk you through, and we are both here to help address any questions you may have. And with that, I'll turn it to Mark. Thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Before Mr. Dombrowski starts, I also wanted, just to make sure everybody knew, that we did get the official ask from C Care, which is the coalition of hospitals and other entities through their representative, Trace Alinas, asking for a postponement of this item. So that will also be a consideration. And I'm glad that the staff is here to make this presentation.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Mark Dombrowski, the Chief Financial Officer for Austin Energy. I have been asked to come and give you a briefing on the power supply adjustment and the impacts that caused the pretty significant increase in our power supply adjustment. So I've put together some materials for you here. I'm hoping this can be a discussion. I also got some questions from some of the council members in advance, so I'll try to answer those as I go along with some documentation that helps support those answers for you. Next page. Does this control it? So quickly, I have a lot of materials. We don't need to spend it if you're not interested in some of the topics where we can move quickly, but I was going to cover the power supply adjustment. Really, what is it? And how do we set it? What are the primary factors that really drove the PSA increase? How we calculated it, both last year and this year, so you can see the differences? And finally, some options that council could consider and what the potential impacts are, as well as some things that we might evaluate in the future as we set rates for the power supply adjustment in future years. Things are changing in the energy industry, as you know, and so it might be time to evaluate some other options.
I think we're going to want you to go through each one of those.
Okay, sure. So the first is the power supply adjustment. There's a tariff that is passed by city council each year, and that tariff really dictates what is included in the power supply adjustment and how we calculate it and when it's calculated. And so you'll remember, we sent out a memo to you about on the 21st of September that really follows along this tariff and how we calculate it. We've had this tariff in place, I believe, since 2012 or 13, in that timeframe, when we changed the structure of our rates. So we've been following this process since that time. One of the things you'll see in there, it really dictates what are the elements of the power supply adjustment. And so the power supply adjustment, you can think of it, we have what we call base rates. And base rates are the fixed charges that we pay. It pays for the poles, the wires, the transformers, the salaries of the employees, our customer service folks. And it's fixed. What that means is it doesn't vary on the amount of energy that customers use. I equate it to like a car payment. It doesn't change depending on the number of miles you drive, right? And the power supply is like your fuel bill for your car, and it does vary greatly depending on how far you drive each month. So the power supply covers the cost of us buying all the energy from ERCOT to supply our customers. It's offset with the revenue we get for our own generation. And I have some slides showing that the numbers there on that. It also covers the cost of our power purchase agreements. So these are for renewable resources, wind and solar, that we have under contract. It covers the cost of fuel to run our generation. It is offset with green choice revenue. It includes the value of solar. And a significant change in the last two years is the over and under collection. And so I get into a little bit more about why that is such a huge component of the PSA these last two years. So this is briefly a timeline. We have what we call the rate year for the power supply, and it's a little different than our fiscal year. It starts on November 1st. And you can see a year ago that we set the power supply on November 1st, 2021. And soon after, we start to monitor that PSA, and we report back to each quarter where we stand on the power supply adjustment relative to that budget. And within the power supply adjustment, it states if the collection is plus or minus 10% of the total power supply cost, then we should come back to council and adjust that PSA. And in fact, it did do that this year, but it really didn't do it until we got the results in July. And you'll see a little bit later why that happened. And so I know there's a question, why is it such a big increase? And why you adjusted earlier? And you'll see here that the change has really started to happen in May and June, and by July, it becomes a serious problem. Of course, we were already in the process of changing the PSA at that point. And so September 13th is when we actually get all of the data that we need to set the power supply. So we did that on the 21st. We sent you the memo stating that we would be changing it. And of course, because it starts on November 1st, I still don't have the actual results of September or October. So we do a forecast for those two months to include in the change there. And of course, the new power supply adjustment year begins on November 1st of 2022. So a little bit about why the PSA increased. And so as you'll remember from the memo, it's a long memo. I'm going to summarize some of the reasons why that we saw. So the first one, natural gas prices really increased. If you, historically, they're about almost 300% higher than they were two years ago. And they've doubled since a year ago. We've also seen a lot more transmission congestion. And really, what this is, is like a traffic jam on the ERCOT grid. And so ERCOT uses pricing to send signals that relate to that transmission congestion. And so that adds to the cost of the power. Next is after winter storm Yuri, obviously ERCOT looked at a lot of its operating procedures and how we behave in the market. And as a result, they changed some of the rules that we follow. And we have a report from the Independent Market Monitor that states that those rules that they put in place has cost about $1.5 billion in the first eight months of 2022. And so our share of the load is about 4%, so our share of that $1.5 billion is significant. And finally, as I pointed out earlier, that we have that over and under recovery, and I have some graphs to show you that. So after winter storm Yuri, we generated a significant amount of revenue as a drawback because our generation was up and running during the majority of the storm. And we returned, or we gave that revenue to the customers last year on November 1st when we set the rate. So it dropped significantly below what the market price was. And as you'll see here, between May and October, we expect to have a significant under recovery. And so not only do we have to make up for the $100 million that the power supply was decreased last year, but we have to then pass on that under recovery to customers for next year. It's a lot of moving parts, and hopefully some of the charts and graphs I put together for you will help us all understand that a little bit better. So here we have, when I mentioned earlier, that the price of natural gas, and why does that matter so much in ERCOT? In ERCOT, about 42% of the power produced comes from natural gas, combined cycle turbines and steam units. And so it really sets the mark for what the price of electricity is in ERCOT. And that line there along the bottom, that's our Henry Hub settlement price. And that really is, kind of dictates what that price of gas will be in Texas that we buy. And so you can see the dramatic increase of that. And that's why I mentioned earlier that the August settlement was about 288% higher than it was two years ago and a little over 100% higher than it was a year ago. So the price of the fuel to generate electricity has almost doubled in two years. So the price of electricity has followed along with that. Next is the congestion. And so congestion, like I pointed out, it's kind of like a highway, right? So when you have a traffic jam, things get backed up. And part of what ERCOT does is it adjusts the price of energy in different parts of the ERCOT market as a result of that transmission. What we experienced in November of 2021, we've got about $128 million of congestion costs that we incurred. And that is three times the amount we normally see. And as an example, I gave you some actual charts. So if you go to the ERCOT website, you'll see these maps of Texas that show the prices of energy within the market here. And on this chart, you'll see if it's a dark red, that is a very high price. And if it's a dark blue, it's a very low price. And so in the first diagram there, you can see out in West Texas, where you have a lot of renewable energy. Here, that, those prices are really high. It tells me that renewable energy isn't being produced out in West Texas. Now, the good thing about that is you don't have a lot of folks that live out there. And so the population's low. And you can see the rest of the state is blue, so their prices are fairly mild. But you can see that the huge difference between pricing there in Texas. A little bit later on in the day, you can see where that congestion kind of moves down to closer to the valley area there. And so you see a lot of wind down in South Texas. Can't get out of, to the load zones, right? And so they drop the price of energy where it's being produced, and they raise it where it's needed, supply and demand. And finally, later on in the day, you can see that most of the state is red, meaning really high prices. So we don't have enough generation there. So they increase the prices there. And up in the Panhandle area there, you see we have a lot of Panhandle wind up there. It can't get to market. It's congested. And so you see a big decrease in prices. This also plays into our own portfolio because if our generation resources, we have a lot of wind and solar, if it's one of the blue parts of the state, it's getting a very low price while we're buying energy for our customers here in our load zone. If we're in the red, we're paying a lot. So there's that price differential that's occurring. When we don't have any congestion, you'll see the state is all one color. And that's where we have a perfect hedge. So what we're producing, what we're buying and what we're selling for is at the same rate, and they offset each other. I talked a little bit about the operational rules that have been put in place in ERCOT after winter storm Yuri and how those are contributing to this increased cost within the PSA. I said earlier, it's about $1.5 billion for ERCOT for the first eight months. And so our shares, about 4% of that, are about $60 million. And some of the rules that really, that happened. So the first was, in order to ensure that ERCOT could have enough generation on hand to meet supply, they're putting more units in reserve and spinning or non-spinning reserve. And so they're paying units not necessarily to produce energy, but to be on standby to produce energy. And they get paid for that. And those generators get paid for that from fees that they charge all of the folks in ERCOT. So you increase the reserves, you increase the cost, increases the fees being passed on through ERCOT. So that's one component. The next is what we call RUC, or Reliability Commitment Unit. And so generators need to come down for various reasons through the course of the year, maintenance and such. When ERCOT looks at how much generation they have and how much demand they're forecasting, if they think they're going to be short on generation, they will call RUC a unit. What that means is they go to that owner of the unit and says, "We need you to stay online." And as a result, since they're being asked to stay online, they get paid to stay online. And again, those fees then get passed upon all the customers within ERCOT. So part of the increase in reserve is because we have more units online and less going down necessarily for maintenance. There are some consequences to that, you know, that we may see in the future, but that's how they've handled the reserve requirement. And the last is, they've changed how they look at their forecasting. And so they're looking more along the lines of what happens if we have, the basis case, sort of a worst-case scenario in terms of load or demand, and worst-case scenario in terms of availability of solar and wind. So when the wind doesn't blow and the sun doesn't shine, we see less generation from those renewable resources. That is more the baseline. So that means more generation units have to be online or in reserve. And all of this really is impacting the costs that we're paying for power on a real-time basis. The next is the over and under collection. And so this chart shows that when we set the rates back in November 1st, we had a pretty significant over collection of about $83 million. Actually, about $92 million going into November. At the end of November, we had returned about $8 million to customers through the PSA, and our balance was $83 million. And you can see how that trends all the way through till about April there, where we had, still had $65 million of over collection. And we had been returning that on a gradual basis to our customers. And then you can see in May where things really changed. In the month of May, we used about $28 million of that collection, over collection, to pay the bills. And so that drastically decreased it. Then you can see in June, another $21 million. In July, $43 million. And at that point, we were no longer over-collected, but we were $27 million under-collected. And that continued to occur in August, another $21 million reduction. So that put us at a total under collection of $48 million. And then we forecasted what we think is going to happen in September and October, continued under collection. And we think we'll end the year about $77 million under-collected. To complicate that, we're also sitting on a receivable from ERCOT. So what this is associated with, with winter storm Yuri, when the Brazos Co-op went bankrupt. And so they did not pay ERCOT, and so ERCOT did not pay us. And so we have this receivable. And it's complicated because it's tied up in bankruptcy court. And the bankruptcy judge really determines how and when anyone will get paid. If you add that receivable, we're still waiting for the cash for that. That makes our total under-recovered at the end of October to be $104.2 million. And really, what that represents is cash that Austin Energy has already spent to buy energy and fuel and transportation to serve our customers this past year. But we have not collected that cash in rates. So that's what makes it the under recovery. And our practice in the PSA is to collect or return that over/under collection over a 12-month period. So we take that under collection, you add it to the PSA over a 12-month period, and that's part what contributes to the large increase. Some of the questions that I've heard is, well, you know, you produce energy. You have your own generation, and it acts like a hedge. And you've heard us say that, both the physical and the financial hedge. So why didn't it work? Well, it did work, and pretty significantly here. So if you look at here, like I said, Austin Energy buys all that energy we need to serve our customers from ERCOT at our load zone or right outside of Austin, sort of like gates that come into Austin. And so the cost to, you know, procure that energy is that orange line there you see. So over the course of the year, it's pretty significant. It ended up being about $96 for an average megawatt hour over the course of the year. Of course, we're producing energy, and we're also hedging, financial hedges. And through those activities, we were able to reduce that cost to the customer to about $40. That's the blue line there. And that's where, you know, the actual costs were. And of course, the PSA that we set last November, it was set to recover $28.62 per megawatt hour. So you can see the difference between the actual cost of 40 and the $28.62, that's the under recovery amount. One of the things that we do each quarter, we present to you our financial report. And in that report, you'll probably be familiar to this chart. We often talk about it. This is where you're seeing all of this occur. So our last quarterly report was through the end of June. And so you can see back in May and June, we were getting these signs that our power supply costs were getting really high and that we weren't recovering enough to offset that. And of course, you can see in July, it really accelerated. And August is, that's the actual for August, and I'm still waiting on September's actuals, but we think it's going to come in about 66. So you can see that those yellow bars represent our actual costs. What we had forecasted was the gray bars there. And the revenue, or what we set the rate to recover, is the blue line. And it was set to recover less than our actual cost because we were returning to the customers that revenue that we generated during winter storm Yuri. This chart also is on our quarterly briefs that we give you. And this really shows how our resources bought down the cost for our customers. And so over the last 12 months, ending August 22, we spent $1,799,000 buying power to serve our customers. Our own resources, those things that we own, like Sand Hill and South Texas nuclear plant and the Nacogdoches biomass plant, which has been running for most of the year, those generated $386 million of offsetting revenue. And so that buys down that load zone cost. Our contracted assets, those are our power purchase agreements. And so those are all renewable energy. So that's the wind and solar that we have the PPAs for. Those also generated $85 million of net revenue for our customers. Again, further buying down those load zone costs. Green choice revenue, when customers sign up for green choice, they pay a slight premium for that renewable energy. And so that flows to the PSA, and we credit the power supply cost with that. And we also have value of solar, which is a cost to us. So we compensate owners of rooftop solar a premium, and that gets paid out of that. But the total of that generated, again, a net benefit of $16 million for our customers. Finally, bilateral and hedging. So these are our financial activities that we do to buy down the price, and that generated additional $58 million of benefit. So at the end of the day, we were able to convert that $1,799,000 of cost that we incurred to $535 million for our customers. Still a lot of expense, but significantly less than what we were exposed to the market at the time. So those are all the, historically, what actually happened. And why is that important? Is because the way we calculate the power supply adjustment is based on historicals. So we set the FY, or, excuse me, the 2023 power supply cost based on what happened in 2022. So this is also a part of that memo I sent you, and I won't make anyone do math. But these are the numbers. So you can see that last year, we had an under recovery of about $51 million in the calculation and actual cost of $402 million. This year, we had a, excuse me, last year's an under recovery. This year, we have, excuse me, over collection. This year, it's an under recovery of $104.2 million. And actual cost, again, that's that $535 million number I just showed you. So that's how it's calculated. And this kind of shows a comparison of the components that go into our calculation. So you can see in 2022, the prior year's actual cost, which would have been in 2021, was about $383 million. In 2023, that was $539 million, or an increase of about $157 million, or 40%. So one of the key components of why the PSA is going up so much is the actual cost increased by 40%. Known in measurables. So this is where, if we have a resource, so for example, Decker Steam Unit 2 closed in March of this year. It retired. And so we know it's not going to be available for us next year. So we make adjustment for that. We take out the costs and revenues associated with Decker Steam Unit 2 out of the calculation. We know that's not going to happen, and we can measure the impact. So those are the types of adjustments. If we have a new power purchase agreement coming online, we know what the costs are, we know what the capacity factor is, we might make an adjustment for that. So these are things that we can hang our hat on that we know are going to happen. And the net effect of that is, we added $19 million last year. This year, we reduced it by 4.3. So that's a difference of $23 million lower. So that benefits the power supply, right? Yuri over recovery, we called this out separately because it was so unique. So in 2022, we had $69 million of cash that we're able to credit the power supply that bought it down, right? So that lowered the cost for our customers. As I pointed out, all of that's been returned to the customers as of May. In fact, we've gone to an under-recovered status at this point. So 100% of it is gone. So we have to increase the PSA just to make up for that $69 million difference. The next is the actual over recovery. If you remember on the chart, we calculate this through, I have actual results all the way through August. And so last year, we had the actual under recovery excluding Yuri of about $2.1 million. This year, our under recovery is $75.2 million, a difference of $77.3 million. So that means PSA has to come up to make up for that under recovery. And finally, September and October results, I do not have yet. So we're using our forecast numbers to develop those. We think that's going to generate $29 million of under recovery adding to that, which is about $10 million higher than we had last year, so that's 44%. So the total is about $351 million in power supply costs last year. This year, it's about $639 million, or $288 million higher, or an 82% increase. And then we take those gross totals in millions of dollars, and we apply that to what we call the load or the consumption, the kilowatt hours that our customers consume. And so you can see back in 2022, we started with the actual cost of about $0.3 known in measurables, added, or reduced. Known in measurables, added, or reduced by nine, almost a penny. Over and under was about 0.6 cents. Expected over recovery added to that. So the PSA rate that we set last November and runs through today is about 2.862 cents. This year, you can see how that's changed. The prior's actual cost is over 4 cents, almost 4.1. Known in measurable changes, the actual over is added 0.6. Expected, it's not going to get any better. So that arrives at the 4.893 cents that was in your memo. That's where the calculated PSA, according to the tariff, needs to be set. One of the things we've done is we've applied this to an average or a typical residential bill. We use the number 860. That's about what a typical customer uses on a monthly basis. Excuse me, we're using 851 on this chart. 851 is what our customers actually used in 2020. So it's slightly less than 860. And you can see that under the current bill, it is a little over $80 is the current customer bill. And the other yellow bar is assuming the application of this PSA where it needs to be, in addition to the base rate increase that is currently under consideration. So I wanted to show you with everything baked into it, where would our typical customer's bill be? And so that's about $118 there. And you can see how that compares to the typical bill for the other regional utilities. And you can see that one of the big drivers for the variations in bills is consumption. So you can see in New Braunfels, their typical residential customer uses about 1,209 kilowatt hours, while in Austin, we used 851. So that's for 2020. And you can see along the spectrum that generally, we are much less in terms of consumption. So that generates a lower bill for our customers. So I know there's a lot of questions about you as a decision makers. What are your options? What are the impacts of those options? So I wanted to cover some of those here with you. But the first, it's, if it's any consolation, this is not unique to Austin or ERCOT or Texas. This is happening nationally, even globally. As I pointed out earlier, that the price of natural gas really drives the price of electricity. And with electrified natural gas, natural gas is becoming a global commodity, much like oil. And so although we have a lot of natural gas in Texas, it has a global implication on the pricing. And so what we're seeing across the country, across the world, is significant increases in the price of electricity where natural gas is the main driver. And so this chart is an index from Fitch that was published on August 30. And it was really to all the public power providers, of which Fitch covers Austin Energy. And so it shows that there's a significant spike across the spectrum, really happening in '21 and '22. And the investment community is watching us, as well as the credit rating agencies. They recognize we're all under pressure and raising rates is never popular. But for a public power, which has no profit component or return component, it's a cost recovery. And so if we don't recover those costs from the customers, we have no other avenue to generate the cash to pay future bills. So they're watching this. Obviously, we have about $1.9 billion in long-term debt. And so our investors are watching us to see what we do, how we respond to this, and whether we can manage it financially. So with that, I have a couple of options here. The text is pretty small, and I apologize for that. So the first option I have here listed is as proposed, what I just covered you. So that's an average system rate of about 4.8. Or for a residential customer, that's about a 4.9 cent per KWH power supply adjustment, or about a 71% increase in that rate. That, on a typical customer, will increase their bill about $17.55. And I do need to add here, we have another pass-through charge called a regulatory charge that is also increasing. Last year, we increased it about 30%. The intent this year was to increase another 30, and next year, another 30, to recover an under recovery there. And what regulatory charge is, ERCOT, the electric grid to transmit electricity is an open access. And so we have a lot of transmission providers. And so those rates are set by the Public Utility Commission, and everyone shares in the cost of that transmission. And again, our share is roughly about 4%, and so we get about 4% of those costs. And these are the bill, we don't pay ERCOT for that. We pay all the other transmission providers in ERCOT that. So that's who we give that money to, to use their grid. And in return, they pay us to use our grid as well, and that offsets that cost. So that's the regulatory charge. It's separate from the transmission, which is a separate line of business. So this is what it takes to get the power from all those generation units all over Texas into Austin to serve our customers. That's the cost associated with that. So that is going up about $2.45. So that's what you've heard, this $20 increase in the average customer bill. That's where it comes, the PSA and the regulatory charge. The community benefits charge is not projected to go up at this time. So one of the positive attributes, and I'm using positive and negative, not necessarily in terms of customers and Austin Energy, but just overall, you know, it meets our existing PSA requirements. So it's consistent with what we've always done, the ordinance we have in place, that PSA tariff I showed you earlier, it meets all of those requirements. It also recovers that cash that we've already expended to buy power for our customers. And why that's important is we use, again, historical costs to recover those rates, and we've already spent that money. And so part of, you've heard me talk in each of these quarterly briefings, how our cash balances are decreasing, and we'll cover it here in a minute. So that cash is going out the door to pay those bills with the intent of recovering in next year's power supply adjustment. So that's why it's going up. The other, it actually reflects the cost to acquire that power. We often talk about sending customers price signals. And you know that within our rates, we have tiered prices in the base rates. And I pointed out that those base rates or recover fixed costs, it's like your car payment. You wouldn't necessarily call your Toyota Finance and let them know that, hey, I only drove 500 miles this month, so I'm going to send you half my car payment. Your car payment's the same regardless of how much you drive. And the power supply is more like that fuel bill. And so our customers actually use that energy. And as you all know, we experienced a significantly hot summer this year. It was still going on until this weekend. And so I calculated that between May and August of this year, we used 13.7% more energy than we did in '21. So our load increased almost 14% year over year. So not only was it costing us a lot more to buy power, we were using a lot more power. So that's the notion that if you drive a lot more miles, your fuel bill is going to be higher, but your car payment won't be, right? So that's an analogy I was trying to using, between the base rates and the PSA, how they work differently. And finally, as I stated, that setting it under this option is consistent with what we've done in all previous years. What's not consistent is the price of power in ERCOT, those rules they've changed, and the amount of under recovery had. So that is not consistent, and that's one reason why this looks much higher than the previous years. Kind of the negative attributes, obviously, is we're always concerned for our customers, and this is a significant increase. And the other negative attribute, as I pointed out, which is the risk of over recovery if the price declines, which is, you've heard people saying, being behind the curve. This is literally, we could be behind the curve. So we increase prices based upon that historical number, and we are seeing natural gas prices moderate. We're not seeing what we saw earlier or last year. And if they continue to decline, and we have a moderate year, we could see power prices decreasing, putting us in a rapid over collection phase, right? During the course of the year, which would have us to come back if it's more than 10% and adjust during the course of the year. But that's obviously a risk, and I often call it called self-induced oscillation, sort of a, the power supply costs are a sine wave, and we're chasing that curve, and every time we adjust it, we might be behind that curve. So that's as I've already presented. Option two is if we take this significant under recovered amount and we spread it over three-year period. So it kind of dampens the impact of that over/under recovery for our customers. That would reduce for a residential customer to about 4.371 cents, or about a 52% increase in the rate, or about $12.85 on a monthly bill for a residential customer. Couple of positive attributes is you're the city council. You set the tariff, you set the rules. It's within your discretion to change that PSA tariff. So you can modify that requirement that's in the tariff. Another positive attribute is it does allow us to recover some of that cash, albeit a three-year period, but it starts to generate some of that cash that we need to potentially pay future bills if we don't have the cash at that time. It's consistent with the method we use for other pass-throughs for stability purposes. As I mentioned earlier, we have the regulatory charge that pays for using the grid with an ERCOT. Several years ago, when the pandemic hit, we had an over recovery. And so as a way to try to help mitigate the impact for our customers, you'll recall, we significantly lowered that regulatory charge. We gave back all of that over recovery you had over about a six- or seven-month period. And so that really reduced the charges for our customers during the early stages of the pandemic. Of course, it continued on, but those charges, they don't vary each year, they slightly increase each year. We've never seen a regulatory charge go down each year. So it's sort of a slow escalating cost. As a way to mitigate that, we said, all right, well, rather than recover all of that under charge in one year, we'll do it over three years. So last year, we increased it about 20%, and this year, we're increasing about 20%. We won't, hopefully, we won't have to pay any more cash to pay those bills, but we won't recover any of that under recovery at this point. It'll still be due to Austin Energy. And then next year, the intent is recover the rest of it with another regulatory charge increase. So we don't do that with the PSA because in the tariff, it's very specific. It tells us to do it over a 12-month period. So you, as city council, you do have the discretion to say, let's do this over a three-year period, as we've done with the other charges. So that's within your discretion. And that will slightly reduce that burden on our customers by cutting that from $17.55 a month to $12.85 a month. Some of the negative attributes, as I'm going to point out here, we are very low on cash. We like to keep around 150 days cash on hand. We're about 120 days, 121 days. And unless we get these rate changes, we're going to continue to spend cash for ongoing operations. So think of it in retirement as you're using your savings. If you don't have a way to replenish that, at some point, you run out of money. And so we are very low on cash. The other issue is, you know, there may be things that we can do to, if we can offset some of our costs, then we can attribute to that cash, that's possible. I don't have any solutions here. You know, we've just set the budget, had some of the lowest costs, our budgetary increases we had in recent years. And as you know, we're seeing a lot of inflation in our costs. So I don't have a solution for you here, but we'll look for ways to potentially reduce expenses that would save some of that cash for us to offset that. And while the negative attribute is it does reduce that increase on our residential customer, $12.85 is still a big increase. We recognize that. But it does kind of dampen that. The third option is to eliminate the under recovery with non-AE funds. And I don't, I don't have anyone offering to do that, but it's an option that, you know, we can talk about and consider and see if there's sources. But, so if we were to totally eliminate that $104 million under recovery, that would lower the rate to $4, or, excuse me, $4.097. And really, what that represents is what is just the actual historical cost to provide power. That kind of isolates that. So that's what we actually spent in '22 to provide power to our customers. That would generate a 42% increase. That's kind of the baseline. If you took out the over and under, it's a 42% increase, or about $10.49 on average customer. And again, you're the city council, that's within your discretion, and it would reduce our PSA burden. Kind of negative attributes, even $10.49, we recognize, is a significant increase on some of our customers. We have a generous cap program that customers can apply for, but even the folks that don't qualify for cap, $10 can be a lot of money. That's $120 a year, so we recognize that. The next is Austin Energy does not have the cash to fund this operation. I can't offer this and say we can absorb that difference. I can't write that down. We would have to find some way to reduce our costs or increase in our revenue and apply that. And I don't have a solution sitting here for you for that, but we can discuss it. And finally, this would be not consistent with existing utility rate making and potentially negative credit impacts. And why that point is, I showed that slide earlier from Fitch, that really what they expect is a balance, that you have financial policies and rates that work in conjunction with each other, and that you recover your costs from those things that cause the cost. And so for utilities, that's the rate making. And so they may look at this negatively. Not as negatively as we don't collect the cash at all, but it could have a negative credit impact. And just giving you an update, so we were up, we were downgraded this year from AA to AA minus by two of the agencies. And make no mistake, AA minus is still a good rating. AA is a good rating. But what's really important to take away from that is why do we get the downgrade? It was because of our liquidity. It means we have less cash on hand. We've incurred two years of negative net income, and we see increasing prices, both in the power market as well as just other inflationary items. And so they're watching what we do for rates. And they've said, if your rates reflect, you know, where they need to go, that's a positive for you, and that could be a future credit improvement. But if you don't take appropriate action, you can expect a further negative or a future downgrade. And so this spring in 2023, Austin Energy will be going to the bond market to borrow money. We're looking at refinancing our 2012 A and B. We think we might be able to get a better rate and buy down that interest cost for our customers, very similar to what Water just did a week or two ago. We also have commercial paper that will be hitting close to its limits. And so we borrow long-term, we take down that commercial paper, we pay it off with long-term bonds. At that time, we will get a credit review by the crediting agencies. And so a lot of the actions we're doing today, and this week, and next week, will be evaluated by those credit agencies and send signals to the investment community when we sell those bonds. those bonds, and could raise the cost of those bonds for us in the, in the, in the spring. And finally, option four is kind of a range. So I've sort of given you option one through three. You could sort of pick a tolerance. So we can go somewhere between $10.49, if you can find me $104 million, or $17.55 to stay consistent with our past practices, or somewhere in between there, what you think might be a rate that's tolerable for you as the city council. And then we can come back with you and tell you what those impacts. It'd be somewhere in these ranges here. So again, you're city council, you get to decide, that's within your realm. And so you can help us decide what is affordable. If you think 17.55 is not affordable, and you want something less, tell us what you think is less, and we'll tell you what the impacts are. Negative attributes is not consistent with rate-making principles. Generally, governing bodies don't decide what the rates are and then tell the utilities, kind of the other way around. But that could be a credit impact on that. And finally, the negative attributes would be very similar to options two and three. Somewhere between really jeopardizing or slowing down to recover that cash to having to find $104 million somewhere. So those are the impacts. In evaluation, I'm throwing out some of these numbers for you. So our cash balance at beginning of October 2020, our fiscal year, was about $402 million in 2020. Since that time, we've been using cash, both for our power supply and our regulatory charge, as well as our base rates are under recovering. And so since that time, we've, our cash balance at the end of August is 184 million. We're down $218 million, which is significant. And sort of the two components of that, so PSA and regulatory, which we've addressed today here, is about 123 of that 218 million. And the other 95 can be attributed to current operations. And part of that is to adjust base rates to recover some of those cost increases we're seeing there. And this is the point I was making earlier with options two and options three. Unlike the regulatory charge or CBC, where it's, you know, under recovered, we can often float the difference for three years. You know, we can act like the bank to stabilize those rates for our customers. The power supply costs are so high now, and our cash balances are so low, that we don't have that option within Austin Energy. We can't float this increase and still expect to maintain adequate cash balances. And I think this is the end of, oh. So that's the PSA. And I know some folks were saying, should we do something different? Is there things we can do different in the future? Like I said, you are the city council, you have the ability to change that tariff. There's no other agency you have to go to. You don't have to go to the state to change the PSA tariff. That's within your discretion. And in fact, many utilities do it differently than we do. Some may do it better, some may do it worse. And I think we have an opportunity to go out and learn what people are doing and find some stories. So, you know, some of our challenges with this really is, you know, our power supply costs, they are, they're becoming more volatile. As you saw that chart where they changed from month to month pretty significantly, the price we're paying, and they're trending higher. They're not getting cheaper. Part of that, again, is natural gas prices, the war in Ukraine, because natural gas is a commodity, it drove up the price of natural gas around the world. As long as ERCOT still uses about 42% of its generation of natural gas, that will be the pace setter for prices of electricity. And we don't see those, they're moderating, but we don't see $2, $2.5 gas like we saw two years ago. We don't see that occurring anytime in the near future. Adjusting the PSA, we tend to do it during the budget season. It makes sense. We're part of the city, we're setting rates and budgets. But for Austin Energy, as I showed you, that is the most volatile time for us. I'm trying to figure out what's going to happen in September or October, and those are what we call, you know, September's a summer month, October's a shoulder month, and it can be pretty volatile. And we've been, you know, we're always wrong. We just hope we're not wrong by much. And sometimes we are wrong by much because October turns into a really hot October, customers use a lot, the rate hasn't changed yet, and so we may significantly over or under recover based upon those factors. So it's hard sometimes to forecast that. Current methodology, we use the prior year's cost to set the current, the next year's rates, right? And so historical costs may not be reflective of the future. And this is really important, we're sitting here today. When we set the cost for '22, we were looking at '21 costs, which were pretty low, and it was nothing reflective of what we actually saw this year, as I showed you earlier. We did not know about the war in Ukraine. We did not know that summer was going to be so hot. We did not have an indication of how the operational posture was going to change in ERCOT. We've seen a lot more congestion because as generation moves away from the load zones, renewables like solar and wind make sense, putting them in the Panhandle and down South Texas and out in West Texas, because that's where the wind blows and the sun shines. But that electricity has to travel to the market, right? That is changing every year on us. And so it may give us pause about just looking at the historic rate for setting future rates. The next is by doing this every, once a year, by setting the PSA, that over or under collection can accumulate large balances. Now, we have a trigger, it says plus or minus 10% of the PSA budget. And of course, as the PSA budget gets bigger and bigger, because the costs get bigger and bigger, that 10% gets larger in terms of dollars and impacts customer bills differently. And so waiting for the whole course of the year, or simply using 10%, may not be the right thing to do for our customers. And finally, as I pointed out with my analogy with cars, is within base rates, those costs are largely fixed, meaning they don't change with the amount of consumption with kilowatt-hours. They change over time, but not consumption. And so it's like your car payment. And so the benefits of conservation efficiency are really in the power supply adjustment. If customers use less, they use less kilowatt-hours, so we buy less power from ERCOT, and that lowers the cost. But the PSA, the way we do it now, it's fixed, right, for the course of the year, and it's flat. And so the customers who are using 300 or using 3,000 KWH are paying the same amount. And so the price signal really should be in the power supply adjustment, and less so in the base rates. And so, you know, some of the opportunities, I don't have any solutions, and I think that's something we need to work with the EUC with, as well as council, maybe through some work sessions. But some of the things we might look at this year is evaluate the frequency at which we adjust the PSA rate. So some utilities do it every month. I'm not recommending that, but that's their approach. And so you get more change, you know, gradual change from month to month, but you don't get the large dollar change, right? Because you're keeping up, you're not accruing an over and under. And it's more reflective of the actual market price. So I always think about this summer, our customers that were using energy, would they have behaved differently or conserved energy if they knew the energy that they were spending was costing 5.8 or 5.9 cents rather than 2.8 we were charging them on our bill? I know I would have, right? I would have set my thermostat differently or something, but the way we do it now, that price signal is coming to the customer. So that's why you see the shock when it comes out, is they didn't know. So I think we can maybe modify that conservation behavior with a better PSA rate. Evaluate changing it during non-summer months, which is common for a lot of utilities used to do. One is it's less volatile, you have, you really know what's happening in those high-volume months, so you have a better sense of where it is. And also, it dampens the impact of the effect because we're a summer-peaking utility. So if you use it in non-summer, it has less of an impact on the customers, it gives them more of a chance to budget, right? So we're not seeing such an impact in the month it occurs. So it gives customers a better chance to react to that. The next one, as I pointed out, was evaluate using both the historical as well as a forward-looking power prices to anticipate market movements. And so, as I pointed out, we're starting to see natural gas prices moderate next year. And so should we take that into account when we're setting the PSA, so we don't end up in April or May having a big over recovery, right? So we've collected more than we need for our customers. So that's, that's one way to look at that. And finally, time of use rates. Some of you have heard about that, and maybe if you're not an Austin Energy customer, you may have a utility that offers time of use. And so really, what this means is the price of that energy can fluctuate during the day depending on how much it costs us to buy during the day. And so if you look, it kind of makes sense. If you look at around 3 o'clock in the afternoon, on most days, ERCOT prices really tend to rise, right? Because people are using more energy because it's hotter for the cooling load. We tend not to see, we tend not to see wind during those hours. It dies down, and it comes back in the evening. Solar tends to be close to peak, and so that helps. But regardless, there's not enough solar penetration in ERCOT yet to make a difference. It's about, if I remember correctly, it's about 10% right now. So if we set a rate that says if you can use less power between 3 or 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and maybe 7 or 8 o'clock in the evening, if you use less power, your bill will be less, right? And so you run your dishwasher, your washing machine in the evening hours, don't charge your car during those hours, adjust your thermostat, or join one of our programs, our smart thermostat program, we can do it for you. And so those things can help a customer pay less in that variable rate that the PSA. But the sticking point on this is we've had time of use rates here in Austin, we've had pilot programs, you may be aware, is these are optional, so customers can sign up if they want. And what we saw when we analyzed the data was, we did have some customers sign up, you know, mostly on the commercial side. I think we had one residential customer still on time of use rate. What we found was the customers who signed up were the runs who didn't use the energy during those hours anyhow. And so they got a break on their energy, but we did not see an equal decrease in our cost, right? And so those, that cost of that program just increased the cost for everyone else. If you make it mandatory, you make everyone respond to the same price signals. And I kind of equate it to like we have the tier structure now, it's mandatory. Same thing on the PSA, is that's really where the benefit of energy efficiency and conservation is. If you made it mandatory, you'd have customers responding to that. And over time, it would change their behavior. And you'd have folks making investments in energy efficiency that could drive that down. It makes things like our thermal energy much more effective, right? That's what we do. So we freeze water at night on our chiller plants, and then we use it during the daytime to buy down those rates. Downtown building owners at home, they can do the same thing. So I think these are some opportunities that we can evaluate. I'm not recommending any of these right now. I haven't done the analysis, and we need to have a discussion and see how it impacts our customers and hear from them. But these are some opportunities that if we're going to continue to see these volatile and high-energy prices, things that we might be able to do to dampen the impact on our customers. So I've done a lot of talking, I'm gonna...
I appreciate that. Let me ask some questions, and I'll go to Leslie right after that. On the, just a quick, on page nine of the report you gave, there's the congestion map that you had.
Yes.
Those three different maps, are those different time periods?
That's correct.
What were the time periods?
I can get, actually, I believe it was one day, but I don't remember the intervals. So we had presented this to the council about a year and a half ago, so this has happened about a year and a half ago, but I can get that for you.
Okay, just to be able to see what that is, to understand that, I appreciate that. With respect to the, obviously, we're paying cost into the system now in ERCOT for the Brazos bankruptcy and for other things. There were, there were utilities around the state that were not prepared as much as we were for the, for the winter storm. We had done more hardening, and that's why our generation performance outperformed the state generally. But yet, I'm not sure we're seeing the benefit from that because we're also now indemnifying those folks that did not prepare. Is that true, or is that...
That's true. So we did get a benefit, so that 104 million dollars of revenue that we generated, that was a result of our plant staying up and running when other plants were down. And also, our supply of gas was not interrupted to the extent that some other folks were, so they couldn't generate. So those two things came together, and we were able to generate revenue. And again, the PSA tariff says you pass that back over 12 months, which we did last year. We held back that receivable from ERCOT associated Brazos because it had not been converted to cash yet, right? So we're still sitting on that receivable, and I showed you that on the map, that bankruptcy is potentially coming to a close. And so we think we have to elect how we're going to handle that receivable, and we're evaluating the benefits now. So we may get that cash, at least, at least half of it, over the course of the next six to 18 months, depending on the bankruptcy. But there's some of it that, because we're a market participant, we will not recover. And that's called uplift. And so over a course of time, they add that to everyone in ERCOT, to their fees, and they recover that over a long period. And so, yes, as a market participant, we share in that risk. That's correct.
Yeah. You would think that if we're smoothing that cost around in the whole system is indemnifying people, that we would also, the whole state would share in making sure that our generation was fully compensated, but I understand that that's a bankruptcy issue. So there are two issues here. We have the PSA, obviously, that we're talking about, that you put on the agenda for Thursday. There is the rate increase that's happening at the same time. And I recognize those are two different things, but for the most of the people in the community, it's one thing. They're looking at what's going to happen with their, with their rates next year. And there were a lot of conversations about the impact of a $15 increase. And now, in the last 10 days, seven days, it's now apparent that it might not be 15, it could be a $35 change. And I think that's what we're addressing and trying to figure that out. I appreciate the background and the education that you've given us, but I think that we need to try to figure out if there's a way to smooth that out over time. And I appreciate the options that you have given us for that. I have some questions about, about that. I recognize on the choices that you gave us, in order to be able to do it internally within Austin Energy, you can, and to put it on the three-year plan, you can get roughly just under a $5 a month savings, or $60 a year savings. And your option two, the option three, I understand, isn't good, and I understand the reason for that. The question that I would have directed to the manager is, these are all solutions that are trying to solve the problem internal to Austin Energy. And I don't know that that it's, we should necessarily be limited that way. If the rate as proposed went through as proposed, there's a million six up to, and 3.3, and then $5 million over the next three years, and increased dividend payment that comes in because of the increase in the total rate capture that the dividend calculation is based on. But I don't know whether we should be looking at reinvesting that dividend recapture that hasn't been part of our budgets back into this process to change that number over the three-year period of time. I mean, ultimately, we're talking about an impact in the general fund budget. We, you know, in terms of looking at the budget, you know, we had some additional dollars, $35 million that came to us during the budget. $35 million that came to us during the budget process that we, that we distributed because those were uncommitted funds in the general fund budget and we quickly found uses for those dollars. Had we known that this was something that we were going to have to take care of, I don't know that the conversations would have necessarily been the same during the budget just a month ago. That might have been something that we might have considered putting some of the general fund against in order to impact the rates. But I think it'd be important for you, from an enterprise standpoint, to look at whether there's anything based on forecast that, manager, that you think that you can, can bring to bear. It would be helpful to know what's happening in other jurisdictions dealing with the same thing. I know that San Antonio is looking at 20, $30 million of extra funds right now and they're giving a discount to their customer base because they have a windfall in their distribution or their dividend payment. Because their dividend payment is calculated on the combined PSA and rate revenue and ours is just the rate revenue. We don't take a dividend on the pass-through cost. They do. But other than San Antonio, which is now, because of that, in a different position than, than us, what about the other utilities around the state? Is everybody going through this same kind of exercise?
Right. So I, yeah, everyone's prices are increasing. I kind of showed you the table there. So that table I showed you, that was using existing rates. So we went out and looked at actual rates, published tariffs from other utilities. As I pointed out, people set their, let's either call it a power supplier or a fuel cost adjustment differently. And Per Nellis Electric, they, they do theirs on a monthly basis. And so they did two things. One, I believe they have an adder on their bill, just for winter storm Muri. And so some of our citizens in Austin pay PEC bills. They see an adder, that's just associated with a storm Muri cost. And then their PSA gets adjusted every month to reflect the actual cost. So you'd have to look at the cumulative amount, but what we're seeing is that their costs are increasing by a similar fashion as we are. Because we all buy power from ERCOT. The power comes from the same place. We all use the same transmission grid. And so really, the question for our customers is, you know, if you're a PEC customer, they tend to use more energy than Austin Energy customers on average, and so their bills are higher.
Okay. So I'd appreciate looking at that. My discomfort with voting on Thursday is this is a pretty significant decision to be made and we really haven't had a lot of time to discuss what the, what the options of variability is. On the option two that you have, there are certain assumptions that are built in with respect to PSA costs going forward. I don't know if it makes sense for us on a monthly basis to recalculate that three-year equation, always with that three-year ending point, but based with whatever the information is. So the additional charge for a PSA, in order to be able to cover not only the payment we have to make, but the future payment is going to change over that three-year period of time as we get more information, as we get deeper into that three-year payment. So I don't know if we should be setting something now that's just for three years or whether we should be having some kind of vehicle or function in the event that it's variable, which goes to your statement earlier about long-term, we should be looking at whether or not our price pressures should switch from the rate to the PSA. I think that's a conversation worth having, but it's not just a longer-term conversation. It probably is, in some measure, a shorter-term conversation in terms of what happens with this charge that people now are going to anticipate and read that is a, is a, is a three-year impact. So that's a second question that I have with respect to the immediate action that we would be potentially taking. And then the last question is, what do you, how, is there injury or prejudice to Austin Energy if we postpone this question for two weeks so as to be able to ask more questions or see additional observations for the manager to take a look at whether there's an enterprise element to be associated with this as well? Does, what kind of prejudice comes from a two-week delay?
Sure. So obviously, the longer we wait to actually change the rate, the larger the under-recovery becomes because we're not collecting it in the actual rate. So right now, our calculations are set to change rates on November 1st, and so they start getting billed at that and the cash will start flowing in December. So I would have to get with our folks that programmed this into CCMB and see if we deferred that two weeks. Could they do that? You know, so change rates November 15th rather than the 1st. That's a possibility. It would slightly increase the amount of under, potentially under-recovery because I'm assuming October 31st is the other period, so now it'd be November 15th, right? So it would not be significant in terms of dollars, we're talking about two more weeks. I think we could accommodate that in terms of working with city council to give you more time to help us solve this problem.
So if you could help us understand what the ramifications of that would be so that on Thursday, we have that information to be able to consider. If you could get it to us ahead of the meeting on Thursday so we have a chance to be able to indicate so that then we could let us know tomorrow or later today with that calculation.
I would assume everything would slide two weeks. So you'd approve the PSA rate two weeks late, we'd implement two weeks late, and we'd collect two weeks late. So that's what I'll assume.
Okay, so check and see what that is. But there, but there's something long-term, manager, to have such a substantial increase in people's bills that come to us and say you have to act within seven days on this begs the question of, of how can it possibly be that, that we suddenly hear about this and expect it to take action in seven days? And this council can't be ready for that, the community can't be ready for that. No one can plan for that. There's got to be a different and better way for us to be able to deal with this situation.
Mark, thanks for the really excellent presentation telling the story. It was a really important one. I hope our reporter friends are catching all the specifics and the nuances and gets that out to the community. That's part of why we want to continue these conversations. And on the 11th, we'll have, at the Oversight Committee meeting, we'll have a list of additional work sessions and public hearings in advance of the tax, of the rate case discussion. And as the mayor pointed out earlier today, these are two separate issues, but they're coming at the same time. And in the public's mind, they're woven together. So we will have more opportunities for these discussions and we'll schedule them in ways that I hope that everyone is able to participate one way or another. And Mayor, hopefully, you and I will definitely be on the dais when the conversations take place. Mr. Tom Brodsky, you mentioned liquidity and how in one of your talking points, how Austin Energy doesn't have much or any, and the financial markets have noticed that. And I think you said that that was a primary reason why we were downgraded. Not that we're in a bad place, but we did go from, was it AAA to AAA?
Double A to double A minus.
Double A to double A minus. We're a public utility, so we can't book profits.
That's correct. We don't have any profits.
Right. We could, however, create reserves.
Yes.
So you mentioned we're going to the bond market next spring to refinance some bonds and we're hoping for favorable rates. So I want to ask about a reserve fund. I think, I'm remembering that council may have looked at create, prior councils to this one may have looked at creating reserves for Austin Energy, but that, that didn't hap, can you give us a little summary of what that? Because I think previous councils at some point may have looked at creating a reserve fund for Austin Energy as a hedge to spiking costs, but that did not happen. If you could describe that.
Well, if I remember, I think you're referring to within rates.
Okay.
So in 2012, when they set the base rates, they put in an amount in rates to collect reserves. So that money was taken and put into the reserves specifically. So it was above and beyond the current operating costs. By the time we got to the 2016 rate review, we had adequate cash, we were healthy, we had upgrades from our agencies, and we had positive margins. And so those margins really moved based upon weather. But at that time, we decided that we no longer needed to collect reserve amounts in rates, and so we removed that and that helped lower the rates back in 2016.
Okay.
So we no longer collect anything to put in reserves. The only thing we put in there is if we have a warm year and people, again, it's base rate, so it's fixed, right? And so they use a lot, they have tiered rates, they generate more cash. I take that cash, I stick it in working capital and reserves. And when things are going bad, as they have the last two years, I take that money out of working capital and I use it to pay ongoing bills in the hopes of collecting it from future rates. So right now, our rates do not have anything for reserves.
Okay. And that may be something that we'd want to look at. Your Slide 22, option two, is the gradual recovery of the under-collection. Does that assume no new spikes in, in future years?
Right. So this still uses that sort of historical cost. And I think one thing I'd like to recommend, given where we're going here, is either through the Oversight Committee or maybe the City Council meeting, carve out a little time, allow us to talk to you about what's going on in the market. And it may be, rather than a 10% adjustment, for example, if we get those funds from Brazos, from the Brazos bankruptcy flow through to us from ERCOT, it might only be a 1% or 2% change. But maybe we come back and we adjust the PSA downward by 1% or 2%, get that back to our customers immediately as opposed to hanging on to it. Things like that we can discuss during the course of the year. If gas prices are going down, maybe we adjust it to reflect that. So I think we have some options going forward. Right now, I can't do anything about the bill we've already paid for, but going forward, I think that's some of my options. Let's, let's work together to try to moderate the volatility in this PSA.
Some of the criticism that we're hearing since the memo came out and through the tax rate discussion is that it seems like Austin Energy and the city of Austin is no longer rewarding people who are conserving. And so, and that concerns me because I think all of us are entirely committed to our lower, to our, to our alternative fuels policies and only want to expand them. In some of the conversation, the discussion that you had, you mentioned that the PSA could possibly be where we reward conservation. Maybe instead of it being fixed, there is some kind of a rebate for those people who are using a lower amount of money so that somehow we figure into that calculation the reward for conservation. I don't know what that would look like, but that would be something I think we would need Austin Energy's and probably our, our energy advocates' assistance in looking at that.
And that's, that's really where the benefits of conservation efficiency flow through. You know, energy efficiency is using fewer KWH to comply, to do the same task, right? So you put in more efficient HVAC or double pane or triple pane windows or more insulation. So you keep the room the same temperature, but you're using less KWH. Conservation is not doing a task to save energy. So that's like turning your thermostat down or turning the lights off when we get the EEA notices. Both of those do the same thing. They reduce KWH. And where that benefit resides is when the PSA. And so an example is time of use rates. If we could have time of use rates that are mandatory, when customers do that during those high-priced hours, they would immediately see a pass-through, they would, they would see the benefits of the reduction. Once in base rates like it is now, we don't see a reduction in those fixed costs when customers use less energy. The pole costs the same, the wire, the truck, the person's salary. And so it doesn't flow through the PSA. And I point out, would people have behaved differently if they got the actual price in July rather, at 5.8 cents rather than the 2.8 we were charging them? I think they would have, and they would have paid less. And potentially, we would have paid less in, in cost to get energy to our load zone. So I think those are things we can evaluate and work on.
And I do too.
Could you do that if we postponed? For two weeks? Could you come back in two weeks and say, here's a, let's do option two, but let's do it in a way that promotes conservation with rate tiers?
I don't, two weeks, that's a lot of math and thinking. I don't think I could get that done in two weeks, but I could come back during the course of the year and brief the EUC and the Oversight Committee on some options. I would hate to make a violent move in one direction or the other and not understand the unintended consequences of that.
Even if we weren't deciding at 10:13, it'd be nice to advance that conversation so the community might be able to understand directionally where we might go. Kathy?
And then I just had one last question.
Go on.
That's okay. I, I know that we review the PSAs and the pass-throughs regularly, but we adjust them just that one time a year. And so maybe we, and I think you talked about this in your presentation, maybe look at considering the PSA a little bit more often and we can balance out maybe some of the incremental changes in the bills as opposed to the annual adjustment. So that might also be something that we look at. So not just the gradualism of repaying or filling the gap over three years, but also having some more nimble adjustments to the PSA over the year. Thanks.
I have a lot of questions, but I think some of them may be answered once I review this all more carefully. Thank you very much for this really, really detailed information. I think this is very, very helpful. I would suggest that we also figure out a way to translate all of this to kind of a one-pager that we can give to constituents who are, who also have a lot of questions about it. I think the memo gets closer to kind of describing it in, in more general terms. And as I think about how I'm going to have to translate it, I think it's going to be one more level up. But I always appreciate, and I dive into the details, so I really appreciate that you presented to us today this really detailed level presentation. To kind of start where my colleagues ended, I support making those changes to the power supply adjustment tariff. And would the appropriate place to do that be in the upcoming rate proposal? I know the mayor, I think if I understood what you were saying, that, that there might be opportunities to reshuffle how we, how we assess the power supply adjustment, but I would assume that that gets built into, into it for prospect going forward, not in the past.
That's correct, but again, you guys.
Yeah, we have options for how we deal with this situation now. But in, in terms of kind of figuring out a new paradigm for how we're assessing it in the future, I would think, when and how do we approve the tariff for the power supply adjustment? Is that in, is that on an annual basis in our budget or is it also in the rate? Will we also be asked to approve it in the upcoming rate proposal?
Right. So a little bit of history. So historically, we did this with the budget. So when you approved the budget, it included our tariff schedule and the pass-throughs. When we changed the budget schedule, we, it's a month earlier now for us, right? Because we have to go to voters. That caused a lot of problems for us and because, as I pointed out, it's very volatile.
Right.
And so we're doing it separately.
I'm really talking about the policy, how we, how we structure that tariff. Because I think, I think you've, you've highlighted, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I, the, you've highlighted a few things that we should probably look at. How frequently we adjust the PSA, kind of what the triggers are that maybe 10% isn't really kind of getting at it anymore. The mayor suggested maybe some other elements that might be factored into the PSA. So when and how are we going to address kind of the policy, our policies for the PSA? Is that something you want us to do outside of the rate review process or is that something that we would ordinarily do within the rate review? It seems like we've talked about those policy issues in the rate proposals themselves.
As you point out, they, they do work in tandem, but they are separate. I would recommend we do it outside of the rate review process because they behave differently, they're assessed differently, but I get it. The customer pays one bill and they see it, but the policies really should be handled independently of each other. They recover different costs, they behave differently, they're set for different time horizons, so they really should be different.
So in terms of the, okay, thanks. So in terms of the recommendations that you've made on Page 24, I guess I'm unclear kind of how quickly we want to come to some conclusions on those. On which, which of those, when do you want direction from us on which of those you should move forward in evaluating and/or changing? forward in evaluating and/or changing?
I mean, we can begin working on this right away.
Okay. And so as I.
And give you updates during the Oversight Committee meetings, as well as our EUC. We'll work with them to help craft these policies or recommendations for policy changes.
Super. Thank you. And I have to look through and really think about those three different options that you've presented us with. But in summing up, kind of where and how we got here, and I think it's pretty, I appreciate, I appreciate that, you know, as I understand what you're saying, so much of, so much of this increase is really outside Austin Energy. It's really driven, to a great extent, maybe almost wholly, by ERCOT and ERCOT changes and the gas market. Is that a fair assessment?
I don't want to blame ERCOT itself as a body, but it's the competitive market we're in and how it's structured. For the longest time, the market was focused on a bias towards price. They really focused on low-cost power. And we enjoyed that for many years. Now the bias is more towards reliability. And so that drives up the cost and that's what we're seeing.
If I had to summarize, though, a good deal, some of this power supply adjustment increase is a result of our not having been paid 20-plus million that we're owed. That's now wrapped up in bankruptcy proceedings.
Yes, that's part of it, yes.
So we're owed money. I would say that, I would guess, you know, I would say we definitely should try to spread that out and not assess that to our ratepayers right now since we have a reasonable expectation that that money is going to come in, just as an observation. The other, the other elements, the congestion cost, which I'm still trying to understand, the third, natural gas prices, which are responding in part to the storm?
Storm because inventory is redown. It's a, it's a free market for natural gas. It's not set. And so they will charge more if they can. And that's what we're seeing. It's also because it's a global commodity with liquefied natural gas, no one going globally. Even though we have a lot of gas here in Texas, it doesn't necessarily come to our market, right? So it's going down to Houston and being shipped out. So all those things put pressure on gas.
And then fourth is the reliability concerns resulting from ERCOT performance. I have a question for you about some of those costs. And then, and then the fifth is the over-collection. With regard to the fourth, some of, and again, I've got to go back to the details to really understand this, but one of the things you were talking about as the conservative operating practices that are now being, are going to cost more and are being now assessed to different utilities like Austin Energy. One of them was having that, I'm just going to put it in my own language, kind of redundant power. I thought that we participated. I thought Austin Energy was one of the entities that, that is a designated extra redundant power person, entity. Is that accurate? And is there any cost savings for us? I've forgotten the term, but it was, there was a very interesting newspaper article and then we discussed it at our.
Were you referring to Black Start?
Yeah. That's exactly what I'm, thank you for taking my inarticulate, generalist language and translating it into that. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is not.
Is that what we're talking about or no?
No, not at all.
Ah, okay.
So this is, you can imagine if, this is really reserves. And so if you need 1,000 megawatts to serve customers and you have 1,100 megawatts that's bid into the market, you're going to hold 100 in reserve, right? And so ERCOT might say, I need, I want to hold 400, right? So they'll go down there and another generator say, I need you, I'm going to pay you to be on standby reserve. So you're not going to sell power, you're just going to be in reserve. And the way I'm going to pay you is by assessing a fee on everyone in the market. And what that assures is if we have a generator go down, that breaks or trips offline, that we have enough generation that can immediately respond. And so the customers aren't interrupted with power.
Thank you for explaining that. That sounds so much like the Black Start, but thank you for identifying that it's a little bit different. Okay. So I think just in, in my general assessment, it sounds like a lot of these costs are being driven by forces outside of Austin Energy. And so that's concerning. I hope we can tell that message really clearly to our ratepayers who need to have confidence in the work that you all are doing and are doing really well. And two, thank you for coming forward with those options that I, that I hope we can discuss to really figure out how to lessen the impact on our ratepayers. And definitely assess, going forward, assessing that PSA on a more frequent basis, as you've suggested, with different kinds of triggers, with possibly a different paradigm for assessing it is, makes a lot of sense to me.
I agree with all of you. I think we do need more feedback and discussion in the community. But earlier in our presentation, you'd mentioned as a standard that you'd like to keep 150 days cash on hand, but currently we only have 125 days. Could you maybe explain to us how quickly we're running through that cash on hand and what a delay might have on the cash on hand? I just want to understand that more.
And I wish I had a great answer for you. There's a lot of cash that flows through Austin Energy with bills every week. But one of the slides I showed you, just as a comparison, is that, I don't have a future projection for you, but if you look in the last two years, we used about $213 million of our cash to fund ongoing operations between the base rate speed and the power supply and regulatory. And right now, we have about 182 days of cash on hand. Now, I do have reserves and I can access those reserves by coming to council and saying I need it. But you kind of think of that as a fire alarm, right? I'm not going to do that unless I have a serious problem going on. We're getting close to that. But the bigger problem is if we don't adjust rates now, I can't replenish that cash. Rates don't do that. And so we will continue to lose cash by funding ongoing operations unless I find some way to reduce the cost. And I, we've tried that. Everything's going up, inflationary costs, so I don't see them, at the best, we can kind of, you know, moderate them, but it's tough. But two years tops, maybe 18 months is, would be a very bad situation at Austin Energy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a whole slew of questions. Let me start by asking, you know, if you were to use our current base rate for their current rate for the PSA, how much more are we trying to recover? What is that dollar amount?
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
So I'm trying to understand, you've thrown out a lot of numbers and there's not been a whole lot of clarity, frankly, in what is fully causing this in terms of how much to ascribe to which. And so you had an example of congestion on the rates that was over $100 million higher than before. And yet, you know, and we had $100 million under recovery. And as I tried to put all of these different numbers together and try to figure out how much of this is changes in the market, how much is changes in the market that are due to air cut, not moving things? How much is due to things that we didn't account for in Austin Energy? I can't do that at this point in time. I don't even know how much money I'm trying to go for as my aim. We have, you know, with, and I understand there's a certain amount of variability to that, but you know, when we do the rate case, there's a revenue requirement and we're shooting to try to recover that much revenue. What is the equivalent with the PSA to that revenue requirement? And if, you can't tell me now, if you can provide it after?
Yeah, I can tell you that the total number, that was on slide 17. So that's the 639.2 million. And I can give you a breakdown. However, that may involve some competitive information in your ERCOT market, so I can't give it to you in public, but I can provide that for you because it involves our generation and the cost.
But is the change the 288? I mean, because you were assuming that you're doing the tariff over the 12 months? I mean, it's just, there are a lot of.
Right. So that's the amount of increase.
Right. Is that, that's what we're trying to get? And that includes the 104 million in being captured in 12 months as opposed to being spread out over three years?
Correct. So that would be the 77.3 million and the 8.9 is the amount that we would spread out over three years. So that's our actual under-recovery and our projected for, and that 8.9 would increase if we defer for two years, or excuse me, two weeks, right? And maybe a small amount, maybe 9 million or 9.1, but that number would get bigger.
And then there's, there's 140 million swing that's just because of Yuri and we gave the money back? Because it's 69 million less and now it's 69 million more, you're saying we have to, I mean, is this a change or is it? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out very clearly, you know, if I had to explain to somebody what, where these pieces are, at this point, the story you're telling us is not clear enough for me to go and talk to my average constituent and say, this is why we need to raise your rates and these are, these are the causes. Or I think even for a reporter to be able to articulate the causes and it is more complicated than simply the price of natural gas went up. And so, and I understand it's a complicated, but we need to be able to get to that point, which is I think what Councilmember Tovar was getting at.
Could we pause on this for just a minute?
We can, but I have a lot of other questions.
Yeah. I can try to take another cut at trying to describe these. It can get quite complex because, for example, the price of natural gas, yes, we buy power from ERCOT this year, but we also sell power to ERCOT, right? So there's an offset. But then you take in the fact we have congestion, so the price I'm selling, it might be different than the price I'm buying. So all these things kind of complicate that, but we will do a, we'll try to do a better job of kind of putting these in buckets that may be a little bit easier to comprehend.
Councilmember Tovar requested that we go through this and I'm, I think that would be good. I'm wondering if I should surface my questions because at some point, I think we're going to have to break for lunch and maybe that would give you time to have some answers from some of the other things.
Do you want to just list your questions when you're ready?
We can try. Because I don't know if you'll have answers by this afternoon. On page 19, where you try to provide us a comparison with other utilities, you do so based on their average consumption, that their utility experiences and what the costs are. And I understand that's probably what they give you, you know, off their website and so that's what you have to use. But if I'm a ratepayer in Austin, I don't care that if I was in San Antonio, I would be paying, if I was using 1099, I would be paying, you know, over 140. I care what I would be paying if I was using the same amount of energy I'm using in Austin. And so this is not useful for me to understand because I want to know if I had the same energy usage there, how my rate compares, not what the average consumer is. Otherwise, that's not favoring those who have conserved and it's not useful to me as a consumer. So I'd like to see another layer of this information where we're really getting a sense of if you were the average consumer here in Austin and you were paying the rates in those other cities, what would you be paying? Because otherwise, I can't, I can't assess that because I'm not, I'm using, you know, 250 kilowatts less. So it's not comparable, in my view.
And we can do that. One of my cautions against that is utilities design rates based upon consumption levels. And so they're going to have different customer charges. As far as I know of these groups, we're only with tiered rates. And so they will set that average much higher because they're assured of that generate, that load. So you can get some really skewed results by standardizing, you know, at all 860, but we can certainly do that for you. We can also try to break down what a per-rate is. But all utilities, for example, all of ours are in, our power supply costs are in the PSA. Other utilities bake some of that into their base rates. So it's always tough to compare. We think this is the fairest comparison is what a typical customer pays to use electricity in their city or that utility's service area. But we can certainly do this at 860 and provide that for you.
Right. But this is combining the base rate and the PSA, as I understand it. So I'm not sure that that variation.
Oh, it does certainly because 860 is only to the second tier within Austin Energy. And so the second tier is about, about 50% cost of service? About 50% cost of service. If you're a utility and your average customer is using 1,200, you can have a much higher rate at 1,200 and collect all your revenue. We're not collecting this year. So the tier structure and the customer charge and the typical bill are all interrelated.
I understand they're interrelated, but I need more information. I don't know what the right format is so that I can go to my constituents and explain what we're doing relative to what other folks are doing in other jurisdictions and whether they are also facing and having to pass on the same costs. Because if the costs that we're passing on are from the price of energy and if they're from ERCOT congestion, presumably other utilities have to pass things on similarly. And that's not a picture I can yet convey.
It's possible I could do a.
I don't know what the right way to do it is, but this doesn't.
Perhaps we could look at these same utilities and see if we can find out what they were charging two years ago or a year ago and compare their increase to ours at the same level of consumption. That would isolate changes in costs, whether it's base rate or PSA.
Yeah. And I'm not wedged to a particular method. My goal is to be able to make that comparison and understand where we are relative to others in the face of the similar, similar shock so that I can separate out, you know, it's a really challenging story to go and say, well, we actually made money during Yuri, but now you're paying for it in this way because we have to adjust your rate. And it's just, it's a challenging way to have to, to explain things. On page 22, you had provided for option two, the three-year gradual recovery. When you were speaking, you made it sound like there might be increases over time to that number so that it didn't stick at 1,285. Absent a major shift in PSA above and beyond what you're anticipating, would the 1,285 be there over the three, the three-year period or would it? Is your projection there with it rising or is, with it constant?
It would rise. So each year, we'd, assuming it was an offset by some sort of revenue or cost reduction that I could apply to the PSA, it would rise. So we take another third of it the following year and a third of it the last year.
Okay. So when you come back with more information, if we can have that more clearly laid out, that would be helpful. It seems to me that we have two different policy decisions that we need to focus on that are related, that may not happen at the same time. One is what we're doing in the short run to make sure that we begin to recover these costs. And we have to make at least a short-run decision. It may not last for very long if we come up with some other policy or whatever through the rate case or through having the discussion about how we adjust the PSA rates. But we need to make a short-run decision on what we're doing in November for the rates. And then there's this question of our policy for the PSA, what triggers, looking back at it. I am really intrigued by the time-of-use approach. And I think that is really important for conservation as well as, you know, for smoothing our costs out, et cetera. So I definitely want to have that conversation, but I just want to acknowledge that I think we have two different situations. Can you explain a little bit more about the ERCOT receivable?
So when we, during one of Storm Yuri, when we were producing all of that power, again, we sell our power at ERCOT and we buy it all from ERCOT. And so at the end of the day, ERCOT said, we had a number of utilities, including Rayburn and Brazos, did not pay ERCOT. They said, I can't pay. And so what they do is they take that, it's called a short pay, and they spread amongst all of the participants there. So everyone gets a piece of the short pay that ERCOT did. So ERCOT's just a clearinghouse in that way. Over time, we've had participants either leave the market, meaning they left their receivable with ERCOT, and that gets turned into an uplift. And they spread that over a number of years, a small amount each year. Rayburn used the state securitization. They, last summer, they passed legislation that secure and tie some of that debt. So they were able to access that. They paid off their debt to ERCOT. And so ERCOT gave us our money. Brazos was different. They declared bankruptcy soon after the storm. And so they, that receivable to ERCOT was tied up in the bankruptcy court and it's been playing out over the last year, year and a half. So at this point, we have in the books a, I'm going to get the number wrong, a 40... A forty-eight or forty-nine million dollar receivable, uh, from ERCOT. Uh, but we also know that, um, we're gonna get some amount of uplift associated with, uh, with ERCOT. So, uh, that's sixteen million and then that's about twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four million dollars. I'll get you the exact numbers there, so that's what we're sitting on the books here, um, as receivable. We don't know exactly what will happen until we elect our options with, uh, ERCOT. And, um, we receive those funds, we don't know when we're gonna receive them. So until that time, it's just a receivable on the books.
Okay, so if you were to credit that, that would reduce the two eighty-eight point three, what was the twenty-some?
Correct, so if I, if I gave the customers credit now for that receivable, that would, I would have to use cash. From working capital, because I haven't collected that cash yet from ERCOT. So, um, I won't get that until the bankruptcy court settles. So we would have to use and further deplete some of our cash in order to pass that back to customers, that's why we've been sitting on it. And what I suggested was, we're getting close with, um, the, the bankruptcy decision. Once that's made, perhaps we come back immediately, make an adjustment, even if it's only one or two percent, we give that back to customers immediately. But sitting here today, if I did it now, it further depleted cash.
Right, but there may be a way that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not supportive of reducing our general fund transfer. But there may be some ways for temporally smoothing things out with other reserves that we have. Um, so you don't deplete it and I don't, I, I have to think those through. Um, but I, but I think there might be a way to, to use our other reserves.
Outside of Austin Energy, or?
Well, I, I, one could imagine, um, again, I don't want to reduce the general fund transfer. But the, or dividend, whatever you're calling it. But I do think there may be a temporal opportunity there, um, to think about smoothing that. So that we could build that into our, to our solution. Um, I think those are my questions for, for right now, thank you.
Mayor. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about climate change, um, and then I'll, I'll be done with my piece. And maybe we could get some lunch. Based on some of the information that Mr. Donbrowski, um, provided in his presentation today. It occurs to me, we could be doing so much more to combat our weather extremes that are undermining our communities. If we weren't having to deal with climate deniers in our state leadership who are failing to act. For example, if Texas were to ramp up its solar power investment more than the current ten percent. Of statewide energy produced, I think the ten percent was the number that.
I'm correct, it's six percent.
Oh, okay.
Six percent is solar as of September seventh.
If the state of Texas were to ramp up the current six percent of statewide energy produced. Then we'd have another buffer to soften these price increases. And then, as in most things, the city of Austin cannot do all of this work alone. We need a more resilient grid system from state leadership to help with the inevitable shocks and stress wars. I'm looking at the state of Texas and its legislative leaders for support and assistance. As I expect all areas of our state are doing at this point. We're in a tough spot, no municipality across the state can carry such sizable financial burdens alone. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, I think, um, one, anxious to see whether prejudice and what the impact is of delaying two weeks. So we can consider options. I think that one of the, the most persuasive arguments to me is I'm hearing the debate about the rate case. And going to a flat fee in the rate case that's going on. Is that we lose the, the price indication to customers by going to a flat rate. If we were to consider maintaining a price indication, but moving it to the PSA. As opposed to the flat rate, which is what I hear you recommending today.
No.
Potentially as a, um, a way to handle the PSA. Because that's something that's, that is a cost tied more to how much power somebody uses. That discussion, I think, may have not only the benefit of helping us figure out how we're doing the PSA. Tariff change, but also taking into account the, the, the issue that's been raised with respect to the rate case. Because we wouldn't be losing the indication, we'd just be moving it to the more appropriate place, possibly. And I think that's an important discussion to have and, and, and I understand you can't advance the ball all the way in two weeks. But I think that that would be a really important part of, if we're setting something with the PSA in order to stop the. The, the deficit that we're in, I understand that. But if there were real clear indications, and these are the things we'll consider moving to and bringing back to the oversight. And to the community and to the council, uh, in, in this anticipated time period, I think that would be helpful.
I, I just want to be clear, I'm not advocating our proposal is three tiers for all residential customers inside and outside the city. Currently, we have five inside, three outside, so our proposal is three tiers. So we're, we're not advocating a, a flat tier at this time.
In the.
In the base rates.
In the base rates, and I understand that, but, but there's, there's an increase in the, in the flat rate component. And I understand that it's across tiers, but it's still an increase in the flat rate. And to the degree that it's an increase in the flat rate, it does serve to, to, I mean, it, it serves to, to, to. To impact the, the price indication with respect to usage. Because you're increasing it and, and that's by design, in order to be able, that's by design. It's just a more holistic discussion about where it is that that price indication should appropriately be. And how do you do that price indication, maybe in, in both areas? But what's the appropriate place to put it, to what degree in each one? And I think that that conversation in the PSA will not only help us maximize the use of the PSA. To help drive, um, equity and our climate change values. But also help put into perspective, uh, holistically, the conversation that we're having with respect to the base rate change. And, and then Kathy.
Uh, I, I won't take a lot of time with my questions, but just to signal them and I can do some of them offline. I want to understand a little bit better what's built into the PSA in terms of the assumptions. I think I, I heard you mention that one of the elements is the power supply agreements, so I want to dig, correct?
Power purchase agreements, yes.
Uh, I'm sorry, that's what I meant, power, power purchase agreement. So I have some questions about the assumptions there. And, um, I'll just make a statement that, you know, we kind of went down this road before, but decided not to pursue it. Because of, um, efforts that Austin Energy needs to make on its own and think through things. But, you know, there, we also have values, we have values for climate change, we also have va- values for, um. Worker protections and worker rights, which from my perspective carries true for what we do when we do power purchase agreements. So that's a whole nother issue and I, I'm gonna want to understand what kind of, um, assumptions we're making related to the cost of those. And that's a separate discussion about how we, how we, um, proceed and understand our, um. Our values as a city related to workers. Um, I also agree with what, uh, the questions that others have raised. And I think it's really important that, that we do delay this, um, because it is coming too fast. And it's also totally taught up, caught up in the public's mind with the rate case. They are not distinguishing this, nor should they, because it's all, you know, both things are. The bottom line for them is how much are they gonna have to pay? So, so we really need the additional time. So I just wanted to echo what you had said, Mayor, and what others had said with regard to that.
Okay, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilmember Kitchen, I agree with you about your point about, um, worker conditions. I need to better understand seventeen and I can make this quick as we leave. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the projections for twenty twenty-three and trying to understand. We have prior year's actual cost of five thirty-nine, known and measurables. And then we have the estimated over-under at twenty-nine and the actual over-under at seventy-five-two. And so that's a difference of about forty, forty-five million. Is that what?
So the, the actual over-under is, um, as of the end of August thirty-first. And then the only number that is not an act, a historical number in the calculation is the estimated. So that is for September and October.
Oh, okay, gotcha, so, so the total over-under, we think, I mean, the total over, no, total under. Is about a hundred and five?
Hundred and four point two.
Okay. And so back to that question that Councilman, that Mayor Protam asked about kind of what number are we hoping to recover? Is that the number we're hoping to recover with the power adjustment supply? If I had to give one number to folks, it sounds like it's the hundred and five-ish, a hundred and four point something.
It's a hundred and four point two.
And so of that, some of it has to do with the money we haven't collected. And I lost, I lost you on what that total was. I thought I heard it was, one minute, forty-nine million dollars. And then you mentioned uplift, so is it forty-nine million plus the additional sixteen uplift? Or is it forty, is, it sounded when you described uplift as if that's money that comes to the utilities. But if I'm, if I'm looking at that hundred and five, it sounds like half of it, we hope to get through relative. Estimated half of it, little less than half of it, we're expecting to come back, right? So we have a hundred and fifty that we have under-collected. Forty-nine million dollars, though, is the amount we're owed, so that's almost half of that amount that we under-collected. And then where does the sixteen, the estimated sixteen million uplift factor in? Is that sort of a credit, once we get it, is it a credit toward that under-collection?
No, so the, the, the uplift will be a charge that we pay.
The wrong direction.
In the future.
Okay, so that's not helping us here. But, but just to kind of assess here, we under-collected by a hundred and five million, but nearly half of that is money that we're owed. That we just didn't get paid for, because it's tied up in bankruptcy court.
No, so if we go to bankruptcy, you know, I'm, I'm getting to an area, I'm not that. Burst in yet, is the bankruptcy, um, so I don't want to give you a false number. But the amount that is expected in the bankruptcy is not to forty-nine. It is, um, I think if, you know, there's some options, we might recover that, about half of that. Um, in the near term, that's at the eighteen to twenty-four months, uh, because there's some conditions need to be met, um, that would convert that to cash. Um, if you take that option, you, uh, forego the remainder.
The total, yeah.
And what we're calculating is, uh, the present value, what's best for our customers.
Right.
Time or, or all at once, and that's what we're working on now.
Okay, thank you, but just again, in terms of my trying to explain this to ratepayers. We need to make up about a hundred and five million dollars. And, and as we look at the different causes, back to your question about what the amount is of the different causes. It sounds like forty-nine million of that is revenue that we were owed, that we did not take in. That we did not, we were not able to collect on, some portion of which we'll get, we hope, through bankruptcy, but we were owed forty-nine million.
I can get you a full reconciliation and help you out with that.
But just the general, am I right on the general understanding?
Um, I don't believe the hundred and four has the full forty-nine, it has the forty-nine minus the uplift. So that's the receivable that's sitting on our book, that's what we expected to receive from ERCOT.
Gotcha, okay.
And we booked that before the bankruptcy court happens, and so now we have this settlement from the bankruptcy court that we just got, I believe. End of last week, that we're analyzing, so I don't have the exact number to give you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm confused, what's the difference between the eighty-six point two and the one oh four point two?
Which, what are you?
Eighty-six point two is the actual over and under plus the estimated over and under. It's the seventy-seven point three plus the eight point nine.
What, what table are you looking at?
Uh, seventeen.
And that's the next column, yeah, underchange.
The actual, yeah, underchange.
So, um, for twenty twenty-three through the end of August, uh, we are under-collected by seventy-five point two million. We expect by the end of October to be another twenty-nine million dollar under-collected. The two, though, you add those two numbers together, that's the hundred and four point two.
And that's the shortfall that we, that we don't have, that we need to recover.
That's cash that we've used to pay the bills that we didn't have.
I was looking at the wrong, I was looking at twenty change versus the twenty twenty-three. Mayor Protam, Houston.
So two more wrinkles, which is where this is getting confusing for me, is we were under-recovering. Because we were paying, um, what we had gained back from Yuri, but the market shifted faster than we anticipated. And we didn't get on that fast enough, so we have a under, some of this under-recovery is the fact that we changed our rates. In order to provide the Yuri over-recovery, which is sort of counted seemingly in two places here. If you look at the two eighty-eight.
That's correct, that's, that shows on page eleven there. So you, that's, we're tracking that, the blue bar is the, uh, in total and the orange bar is what's happening on a monthly basis.
Right, but, but so, so there's, there's, in addition to not being paid, we had been paying back to the customers. Um, you know, we've been charging a lower rate to provide, um, the money back that we had earned during Yuri. But we didn't adjust it fast enough, and so now we're under-recovering.
That's correct.
And then in addition to all of that, we have higher prices that we have to cover. So it's not all the one of, it's not all the one oh four, but it's somehow figuring out, how do you communicate that to people? Because, you know, you know, the Yuri stuff is a good story and a bad story. It's a good story because we made money on Yuri, it's a bad story because we didn't adjust it fast enough to get going. You know, and the hundred and four, there's the part that's, well, we didn't, we didn't.
We didn't, we didn't correct it.
We didn't correct it, but the hundred and four also includes money we, if we had not done the sixty-nine million. We probably would have had that, you know, if we had not made that adjustment, we'd have that, that money. Um, and then there's the cost of, excuse me, the, the cost of power. Which is up in part because of how ERCOT is changing things and the congestion costs of ERCOT. And, and, and so it's, that's a lot to try to explain.
Very dynamic, yes.
Um, to people, and, and I think there's a piece here, at least in these numbers. That's not real clear with what happened with the Yuri over-recovery and under-recovery. Which, if you just look at the two eighty-eight point three, which is what you told me before, I should be looking at. It seems to be double counting the sixty-nine, because we, has the change. Because that change is appearing as a positive change in that row for Yuri over-recovery. And then it's also the cause of why we didn't get the seventy-five there.
I appreciate it, I will try to be, um, uh, more descriptive. I live and breathe this stuff, so it's, it's hard sometimes to look at something and say, I don't understand this. Um, but I appreciate the input, we'll, we'll try to do a better job.
Thank you.
And just to, just to punctuate something several of you have mentioned. The real challenges here are that this is coming forward at the same time as the rate proposal. And so with the understanding that these are separate processes, we as the policymakers can't look at it that way. We're gonna have to look at it, um, together, because those, those, um, proposed increases are going to hit the same ratepayers. Who are the people we represent, so we can't afford not to, we can't afford not to consider how, how, how these things are coming at the same time. And frankly, I always thought the base rate proposal was too high and I would prefer having five tiers rather than three. But I think in light of this necessary, you know, what is likely going to be a necessary increase of some sort. And I appreciate the different options, I think we also have a, have to reevaluate the, the rate proposal.
Mayor.
I just want to comment, you know, I, because I've been following the, uh, gas market here. Especially when, uh, the decision was made that, uh, they cut off the gas, uh, this, Russia cut the gas off. Off to Europe and the need to support the conflict that's been going on over there. You know, and I saw that the price of the gas was just skyrocketing on the market and I said, oh my God. And just like gasoline, you know, even though we make a lot of gas. And just like gasoline, you know, even though we make a lot of gasoline here, it's still managed and regulated by the market. So I saw that whole increase, and I just was waiting for this report to come because I know it was going to be bad. So I want to thank you for that report.
All right, guys, it is one fifteen. Let's come back at two o'clock. We'll do the last two briefings starting at two and polled items. We're in recess now, one fifteen. We'll also talk about Thursday management. Good afternoon. It is two seventeen. We're going to reconvene the city council's work session here on September twenty, I guess it's twenty-eighth. Seventh, I missed that day both ways now. September twenty-seventh, two thousand and two, in the Boarded Commission Room. Colleagues, we have the, the briefing on Climate Equity Plan, the briefing on Trash and Creeks, and then we'll go back and do, unless Kathy, you wanted to do those ILAs quickly? We had talked about doing those in place, or we can wait till these briefings are over?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with waiting, Mayor. I know we have folks who have been waiting to present, so I'm okay with giving them after.
Then let's go ahead and do that. We'll do the two briefings. Then we will double back and do the remaining polled items plus the discussion of Thursday. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.